It is six o'clock. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. If you would, please rise. If you would bow with me for the invocation. Father, we thank you for this day, and Father, we thank you for the blessing that you've been giving us in rain. Father, we know there's dry areas, and Father, we just thank you for that rain, and we ask that you would bless us with more. Father, we lift up our first responders. Father, keep them safe, also keep our citizens and all those traveling on the roads. Father, it seems like we see a death every day, but Father, we just pray that you would be with those that are driving. Father, we just ask that you be with us tonight. Give us wisdom, and, Father, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
At this time, Councilmember Gonzalez will lead us into pledges.
..............................................................................
You may be seated.
Oh, my gosh.
Next, moving to proclamations, awards, and presentations, it's my pleasure to introduce our state rep, Mr. Brooks Landgraf.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Really, the only reason I'm here this evening is, first of all, I appreciate y'all letting me visit with you for a minute, but the next session of the Texas Legislature is going to begin in January of 2019, and as the saying goes, you know, nobody's safe when the legislature's in session, and I suppose that's going to ring true again in 2019, but there are a number of issues that can impact the city of Odessa and other municipalities across the state, but there also may be a number of ways where we can work together and be helpful, and so if there are any of those items that I can be doing homework on in advance of the legislative session that would benefit the citizens of the city of Odessa, please don't hesitate to let me know. I'm here to work for you all, and we all have the same bosses, you know, being the citizens of Odessa, and so if there's anything that I can do to help you do a better job for them, then I'm all too happy to do that, so please don't hesitate to take me up on that offer. Secondly, there are going to be a number of issues that could have a very direct impact on not only the city of Odessa but other municipalities across the state. One is, well, actually, there are going to be two that are going to be repeats from the last legislative session in 2017. One is a property tax reform measure, namely, property tax caps that passed in the Texas Senate in 2017 but did not pass in the Texas House, but a proposal probably capping property tax increases to 4% without triggering a rollback election is going to be back on the table. I just want to give you that preview of coming attractions, just to know what is going to be, you know, one of the items that's going to be discussed, you know, beginning in January of 2019. Another item that might be of concern to you is relates to the issue of municipal or forced annexation and annexing areas within the extraterritorial jurisdiction but outside of the city limits. There was a proposal that was put forth that actually, you know, there was quite a bit of support from the governor's office on that. Notwithstanding that support, it ran out of time both in the regular session and the special called session in 2017, but I also expect that to be refiled, reintroduced, and re-debated again in 2019. So, I know that that's very important for you and other municipalities, and so I just wanted to bring that to your attention in case there is anything that you would like for me to know about that process. So, that being said, I'm also happy to answer any questions that you have, Mr. Mayor, council members, or any of the other city staff.
Just one, game rooms are becoming more and more of a problem.
Right.
They are criminal beds. We bust them. They come back under a new name, open back up. We need legislative help to be able to shut them down. I know I've emailed Senator Seliger. We just need help to get those things, or at least if we bust them in one area, they can't go back in there for something.
Well, we do have a precedent for that. During the 2017 legislative session, I was approached by the Ector County Attorney and some other county officials. As you all know, as bad as it might be within the city limits, it's even more rampant in places outside of the city limits, and so we added Ector County to the list of just a handful of counties across the state that would have the authority to directly and specifically regulate game rooms, and my understanding is, is that the county commissioners' court adopted a statute that would enable them to do that, and the Ector County Attorney's Office is beginning or has begun prosecuting some of that, and I think they have had some success. So, if we can duplicate that effort here at the city level, then I'd be happy to do that.
Any other questions from council?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Please fight the annexation. Please fight property tax caps, and something has to be done for the retired teachers with their insurance, and the pension needs to be protected, teachers.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I do appreciate that, and I understand the importance of making sure that the state of Texas keeps the promises that it made to retired teachers. I've always supported fulfilling that promise, and I'll continue to do so.
And just remind your fellow representatives that when Bush was governor, the state borrowed from the teachers' pension fund, and they have never paid it back. So, remind them of that. Needs to be paid back.
I'll be happy to do that, Councilwoman. Thank you.
And keep up the good work. Thank you, and we appreciate the way you work with us, and you've done a lot that's helped us tremendously, so thank you.
It's my pleasure to help. Thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
I have nothing else to say. No, as far as on the game rooms, if there's a way of looking into, because gambling, right, in that particular field is against the law, right? So, right now, is it just the game rooms that get caught and they get closed down, but nothing happens to the people that actually participate?
What happens is they actually, you're supposed to gamble for small prizes. It gets to be going to where it is cash.
Yeah.
Our police officers have caught them giving out cash, and you go in and you take the motherboards off the machines. Two months later, somebody comes in under another name, opens up the same place, and then we end up dealing with it again, and it's a headache for our officers. Typically see drugs, typically see other things going on there, and it's just, you know, our officers are stretched thin now, and that's one less headache.
Well, because I'm more for if, you know, somebody's participating with something illegal act, I mean, that's no different than you getting a ticket for speeding, so if somebody's there, I mean, they should be fined some form or fashion, in my opinion.
Yes, sir, and I think most people, including even legislators, would agree with that assessment, too. Yes, sir.
Thank you so much, and keep up the good work.
Thank you, Councilman. I appreciate that.
Anything else?
I just commend you on one thing. Keep up the good work on the funding of education. I'm back you 100 percent. Good job.
Thank you, Councilman. I appreciate it.
Tell your wife she's done a good job.
I'll be happy to do that as well.
And any more money for roads? We'd really appreciate it.
Well, while you're, and I don't want to take up too much of your time. I know you have a full agenda, but one thing that we're working on right now, look, we're always fighting a losing battle. There are, out of 150 state representatives in the Texas House, there are 16 of us who represent the area between I-35 and the El Paso County line. Now, that's, we're talking about half of the state geographically, but only 16 out of 150 are representing, you know, this wide swath of Texas, and when you're going up against numbers like that, sometimes, you know, we're having to scrape for every dime that we're getting for highway funding, and under those circumstances, we've done okay, but we clearly need to do a better job. As you mentioned at the top of the meeting, Mayor, we have too many fatalities. Permian Basin is home to about 2.5% of the state's population, but we are home to 10% of the fatal car accidents in the state of Texas, and we all know that. We're all very familiar with that, but the bottom line is, is that the traffic that we have, which is a blessing from God, we're thankful to have it, but we need to have highway infrastructure that can accommodate that traffic, and the current formulas that the state uses to allocate that funding doesn't take into consideration oilfield traffic is really what the bottom line is. So, we either have to change that formula, which is going to be a tall order, or what we can do, and what I'm working on, is finding a way to tie energy production, maybe with reserve or withhold a portion of the oil and gas severance tax and use that, I mean, we're talking a small percentage, but if we did that and you reserve some of that in the area where that revenue is generated, i.e. energy-producing areas, just to take care of the infrastructure needs of that area, then we can help address our highway infrastructure situation, our public safety situation, and might even be able to devote a little bit of that to making sure that we have a skilled workforce, because, look, this is good for the Permian Basin. We all know that oil and gas production is our bread and butter out here, but it also has a tremendous benefit for the entire state of Texas. So, if we're not taking care of the infrastructure in the oil and gas-producing areas, then in effect, we could be killing the goose that laid the golden egg.
But they sure do love our severance tax.
They sure do love it, but if we can keep a little bit of it to devote that to infrastructure, then that will enable us as a state to continue producing lots of oil and gas severance tax for the future, and so I think it's a very small price to pay, and I think you get a heck of a return on that investment. So, that's one thing that we're going to be working on.
Look into what El Paso did. If we could do what El Paso did, that would help us tremendously. So, I can talk with you about that later, but you probably already know what they did.
I'd love to visit with you about the details.
Okay.
And lastly, see, when you give me the mic, Mayor, I'm just going to take it. Lastly, I know it's been an up-and-down year, and I know that there are, you know, a lot of things going on here in the city of Odessa, but that means that we're a dynamic community, and I know that you get a lot of criticism for the things when they don't go the way that we all plan, but you probably don't get enough credit when things go well, and then there are a lot of great things going on in the city of Odessa. So, I just want to thank all of you for your public service and doing what you can to make this a better place, in my opinion. I'm like a lot of you. I'm a hometown boy here. For my money, this is the best place in the state of Texas to live, work, and raise a family, but we couldn't do that without having strong local leadership, and so I appreciate what y'all are doing.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your service.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. Next, we'll move to the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Move to other council actions. Public hearing, we will open a public hearing to consider the approval of requests by Warren Real Estate Holdings. Mr. Brenley.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The city mailed out 12 notices related to this case. We had no notices returned. We did not receive a written protest. We did receive a written approval related to this request. The property involved in the request is located northeast of the intersection of Production Street and South Meadow Avenue. The site is currently designated future development, and it is occupied by industrial development related uses. This is a piece of property that was recently annexed into the city. It's part of a industrial district contract that expired and then was annexed at the expiration of that contract. The property is surrounded by industrial development and related uses. The applicant in this case is Warren Real Estate Holdings. They do own the property, and this is actually Warren Cap, the big equipment area, and the purpose of this request for original zoning of light industrial would facilitate expansion of the existing use on the property. The proposed original zoning is not contrary to the established land uses in this area. It is industrial development, nor is it contrary to the future land use map of the city's comprehensive plan. The proposed original zoning is not out of scale with the needs of this neighborhood or the city, and the Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval to this request of original zoning of light industrial, and the planning staff does concur with this recommendation for approval, and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from Mr. Brenley from council? Okay. This is a public hearing, so at this time, I will open up the floor for anyone who would like to comment on this agenda item. If you would, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item two, we'll open a public hearing to consider the renewal of a taxicab franchise for Coric Bruns. Ms. Brooks?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. The franchise for independent taxi will expire on July 31, 2018. The owner has submitted an application for a new franchise, and it has been approved by the chief of police. The franchise will be for a period of five years and authorizes a total of five taxicabs. The company representatives have agreed to comply with Article 4-10 of the city code, which governs taxicabs, and she's here today if you have any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions?
I just have curiosity here. Has Uber, in any form or fashion, hurt your business?
Have y'all hurt?
No, Uber, Uber.
At this point, no.
Good, good. That's good. That's competition. That's pretty good. Okay?
Okay. Are there any other questions? Okay, well, this is a public hearing, so at this time, I will open up the floor for anyone who'd like to comment on this agenda item. If you would, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, and good luck.
Yeah, thank you for what you're doing.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Next, under ordinances, consider authorizing the abandonment of South Lee Avenue and Alley Rightofway. Ervone?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, council. This item is to consider authorizing the abandonment of South Lee Avenue and Alley Rightofway. Alpha and Omega has requested that the city abandon .49 acres of South Lee Avenue Rightofway between West Pearl and Street and West Murphy Street located between Blocks 13 and 14, Cannon Dell Edition, and approximately .13 acres of Alley Rightofway. The city will not retain general utility access or drainage movement over the abandoned street. The purpose is to fence off the abandoned street and alley for yard use. Alpha and Omega has agreed to the compensation due for this abandonment, and city staff recommends approval of this item, and I'll be glad to answer to your questions.
Okay. Are there any questions from council? Okay, we do have one citizen who would like to speak, Jackie Johnson. If you would, please come forward. Mr. Johnson will have three minutes.
Okay. It won't take that long.
All right.
I am the owner of Alpha and Omega Contract Sales and Consulting, and, you know, just giving honor to God first and foremost, just want to say thank you to you guys for your consideration to allow Alpha and Omega to abandon that street to not only protect you but also protect me and the liability on both sides of that street. So, if there's anything Alpha and Omega can ever do for you, just let us know.
If you're a rental company?
Rental. We do rental. We do liquid nitrogen pumping.
Right.
So, just trying to house everything under one roof.
Good. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
And motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item four, consider authorizing the abandonment of 41st Street Rightofway. Mr. Ervone?
This second one is to consider authorizing the abandonment of 41st Street Rightofway. PNP Rentals and any SIM Special has requested that the city abandon .45 acres of 41st Street Rightofway between North County Road, West and Wrangler Avenue located in Terrace Hills at Edition 6 filing. The city will not retain general utility access or drainage movement over the abandoned street. The abandonment will facilitate expansion of the existing commercial businesses. The businesses, business owners have agreed to the compensation due for this abandonment, and city staff recommends approval of this item.
Okay. Are there any questions from council? Okay, if not, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Ervone. Item five, consider amending the city code of ordinance at chapter 12 entitled Traffic and Vehicles. Mr. Feldman?
Good evening, Mayor and council. These proposed amendments are for the purpose of providing uniformity with regard to the enforcement of parking, storing, and driving of commercial vehicles within the city limits. It's basically combining definitions into one section of the code rather than having them in various places, and this was requested by the municipal court as basically the definitions of hazardous materials, local truck, through truck, and trucks.
Okay. Are there any questions from Mr. Feldman?
No, but the other day, I stepped out my front door. There's a huge oilfield truck in my neighborhood going down the street. Took a picture of it, but thank you for doing that, and please say thank you to municipal court. We've got to stop this.
One of the questions I have is that I'm starting to notice a lot of the sand trucks that are starting to park in, like, I want to say, the Walmart HEB parking lot and, you know, in certain commercial areas, and from what I've been told is that because it's a commercial area, they're allowed to park there. Is there any way that we can amend that and look at it as, because I have no problem with somebody wanting to start their own business and wanting to, you know, be entrepreneurial, you know, but I think we all got to follow rules, and we got a city that we got to take care of in the long run, so, I mean, if they're willing to do that, then they should be willing to invest in a property when they can property park that instead of what I call bullying themselves all over the place, you know, so I don't know if that's something that we can visit with or...
Yes, sir. That's something that staff is currently looking at to revise and possibly bring back to you.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Feldman. Item six, consider amending chapter one, general provisions, article 1-8 entitled Finances. Mr. Landers?
Mayor and council, this is presented to the council at your request to consider a change in the procedure by which the city accepts donations. This would allow donations of $10,000 or less to be accepted by the city manager and wouldn't require city council approval. It's important to note that this doesn't take away the ability of the city manager when he thinks it's appropriate to present that information to the council and to let people know that we certainly do appreciate and want people to continue sharing and donating with the city.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I do. I feel like that takes away transparency. I don't think we need to streamline things that much. I think when you set the limit of $10,000 and under, that sends a very negative message to the people that, well, maybe your contribution is not worthy enough. We had a $3,000 contribution tonight, and we know how the police are going to be using that money. I think that's very good. I personally want to know when people give money, and I think most people, yeah, there are some people that want it to be anonymous, but it's presented to the court, and it's presented as anonymous, and they know that it was. I just think maybe you streamlined a little bit too much.
Okay. Any other comments?
I'd just like to say the process that we have right now is we have to have staff in finance committee to present this, and we've got an awful lot of things that they could be doing elsewhere. It's not taking away from the gift whatsoever. That gift can still be recognized in the council meeting. It can be recognized individually. It can be recognized whatever way we can do it. I think it's another way of really trying to help staff in regards to the operations they provide.
Okay. Any more comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we reject this.
I think Malcolm just...
I moved.
Okay. I heard his first, so we'll vote, and if it's a no, then we can reject it. You voted to approve it, correct?
Yes.
Okay. A motion. We have a second. All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye and opposed.
Okay. The vote is four to one, and the item is approved. Under resolution, consider resolution amending the 2017-18 FY budget appropriating an additional $5.8 million for the general fund balance, awarding a bid of $8.8 to Stoddard Construction Management for the Ector County Theater Rehab. Mr. Kerr?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. I'm passing around a copy of the presentation that was provided at finance committee last week on this project. We're coming to a point where we're needing to make consideration on the design and bid that we have received. On April 26, we received a bid for rehabilitation of the Ector Theater project, and the bid is good until July 25, so we're kind of coming to the time point where we need to make a decision. So, what's here for your consideration is the proposal to accept the project in moving forward, and so we have a resolution attached, and the resolution is to amend the 2017-2018 fiscal year budget by appropriating an additional $5,810,000 from the General Fund Reserve. This will provide a total budget of $10,810,000 for the project. $5 million was previously appropriated in January of 2016. So, the resolution would include appropriating that $5.81 million to add to the budget of $5 million for a total of $10.81. As detailed in the item, design and construction management is $784,800. Construction is $10,025,200. That adding up to the $10,810,000. The resolution provides for the award of the bid for the Ector project to Stoddard Construction Management Incorporated. They're out of Bolverde, Texas. They provided the lowest of two bids received at $8,800,000 for construction, so the actual construction work is $8,800,000. The second low bidder is RKJ Construction out of Lampaces, Texas, at $8,959. The resolution also would authorize the city manager to execute all appropriate documents required for completion of the project. I can read the caption of the resolution for you. "The resolution of the city council of the city of Odessa, Texas, authorizing the appropriation of an additional $5,810,000 for the Ector Theater rehabilitation project for a total project budget of $10,810,000, amending the budget for fiscal year 2017-2018 to appropriate $5,810,000 from the General Fund Reserve balance for said project, approving a bid award in the amount of $8,800,000 to Stoddard Construction Management Incorporated for the project construction, authorizing the city manager to execute any document necessary to implement this resolution and declaring an effective date." Sorry, some of those things sounds like I'm telling you three or four times, but I want to make sure that I try to keep that clear, so. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I do. I think all of you know I have fought for the Ector Theater ever since we first considered it. I think it's very, very important. I want it to have the wow factor that our hotel and our conference center has, and we can have that, but I do not believe that we need to go with this company. You say this is the final amount. Well, if it's the final amount, I guess we're going to have an Ector Theater with no seats. We're not going to have any of the lighting outside. There's a lot that still has to be funded. My feeling on June 27 of last year, the amount was $5.5 million. It had gone up from $5 million the year before. I do not believe that the reason it has gone up so high is because of construction cost. I think it's because personally, this person has a reputation with other cities of its continually going up, going up, going up on price, and you think you're almost through, and you told them this is the last dollar. We have no more money, and you find out, no, you have to pay more because you can't use it until you've finished it. I don't like that. Our construction person, excuse me, our construction person with the hotel and conference center says that if we were to go out and get another architect and get this done, it would not affect the hotel and the conference center at all because the work would be done on the inside. So, if it doesn't open exactly at the same time, that's okay. I think there are a lot of other, in fact, there were four people that... I think there are a lot of other, in fact, there were four people that answered our RFQ. I've talked to other cities, there are a lot of very good companies that do this, that do fabulous work. I look at what he's given us, and I compare it to a Ford. I don't want the Ector Theater to be a Ford. Compare it to a Cadillac, or compare it to a Rolls Royce. And what this company is wanting us to have is a Rolls Royce. The Wagner Noel is not even a Rolls Royce. I think we need to, we owe it to the citizens, these are my tax dollars, they're your tax dollars, your tax dollars, and I don't like to see it wasted. He gets a commission, a ten percent commission on everything that goes in that building, and everything that's done to it, and I, I disagree with that. I really think that we need to go out and get a different company. That's a lot of money, and like I say, this ten point eight is not the end of it.
I'd have to say the same. I don't, I don't see this ten point eight being the, the cap on this. In fact, I don't like it at all, the fact of it's gone from five million to all of a sudden, it's ten point eight, and when you look at the global backdrop of what's going on, what's going on outside of here could affect Odessa as we know it, you know, we are heavy into oil and gas. So, with that being said, let's say we do spend ten point eight on this building, will we be in reach of getting a return on our investments, or not we, the taxpayers, will they be anywhere in the ballpark of receiving some type of return on their investments? Because as I see it, that theater's gonna have to be booked up pretty much every single day, just for us to even try to get close to returning the funds that was put into it. I know Mr. O said something the couple of weeks back, he said he was open to it being an open, an open top event, meaning no roof, an outside type of facility. I, I would think that something like that would cut down on a lot of the maintenance costs and a lot of the construction costs that you guys are here asking us for today, so, I, I just, this just doesn't sit well with me whatsoever.
Okay, other comments?
We, we, we don't even have to have the open venue like that, we can still have the theater as we had originally planned, with a very, very wow factor, and yet not waste our money in the manner that this person is wanting us to do.
Okay, other question or other comments?
I would just like to make a couple of comments. Number one, do I like the price now? But we've had two and a half years to make a decision on this. In the meantime, we have gone forward as if it was gonna happen, as if it was gonna be a part of the whole venue downtown.
It's still, it's gonna be a part of the whole venue.
I did not interrupt you when you talked, okay? Along those same lines, we've been very blessed with sales tax dollars, hallelujah, that we have been in order to compensate the cost accordingly, but this would have been an item that was made a decision, but was first talked about two and a half to three years ago, and we had a concern about the Ector cost at that time. In the meantime, we have had nothing but escalated prices. Escalated prices, we've had, we've had venues regards to the, to the iron, and all the various different things associated with the price of the building has been affected because of the timeframe. And accordingly, that's not, we can't control an increased cost in that capacity. The other thing was, is if this was a, someone of, of a bad, has a bad, whatever it might be in, in other parts of state, why was that not told? I mean, this is not something that just happened overnight. If he has a bad reputation, it should have been something that's close to the whole group, accordingly, but we are where we are, we need to go forward.
Okay, other comments?
I have a question as far as what systems have we put in place to address the issue of, of incrementing pricing? You know, in other words, one of Barbara's biggest fears is that it's gonna, this is not gonna be the end of it, but in the presentation that y'all did, and y'all brought everybody in, supposedly this is, this is it, right? And any other cost that comes out, unless we change it, it's, it's there, they have to eat the cost, even if it has to do with staffing, it has to do with, with material, all that's gonna be included with this price, that's something they're gonna have to worry about, right?
Yes, sir. Let me...
Part of the contract will be a guarantee.
The contract for the eight point eight million includes everything that's in the contract, so the, the construction, the demolition of materials in the building, repainting, rebuilding, adding a floor so that we have a, the visual of the stage is, is appropriate for enlarging the stage, taking the back wall off, all of those construction aspects are detailed in the project, in the drawings and in the, and in the specifications, and the contractor will have to perform those within the eight point eight million dollars. There, the ten point eight million dollars that we talk about includes, it's one of the last sheets on the presentation from, from last week that, that are passed around, it includes contingency money of seven hundred thousand dollars. So if something comes up that we're not certain about, that, that we couldn't have known or otherwise, or if we asked for something in the process, there's seven hundred thousand dollars of money that is not assigned, it is there so that we may use it if necessary, and this is common practice, it's necessary on any type of project like this, you have to have some type of contingencies. The chairs, there's two hundred thousand dollars assigned to rehabilitation of the chairs. The neon sign, we have a hundred thousand dollars assigned for the sign. All those things are included in the ten point eight million. It also, that ten point eight million includes the, the design fees and the, the inspections, or the, coming for contract management, as well as inspections, because we will have to have concrete tested and inspected. There's also, because of the size of the facility and the size of the mechanical systems, we have to contract a third party, and we can't use anybody that we're involved with at this point, you use a third party, and they have to come in and commission the air conditioning and start it up, okay? It's by code, so, those monies are, are assigned in this ten point eight million dollar budget. We have money here for the concession booth that will be in the conference center, about a hundred thousand, a little over a hundred thousand dollars for, for that work. The fees for the contract, the design for the architect are not a ten percent fee on everything, what it is, is a set fee that is established at the start of the project. You do not, he does not receive ten percent of everything, that is not common practice.
Have you read this?
Wasn't that disclosed?
He does not receive ten percent on, on everything in the project.
Maybe you need to read it.
In our meeting, was it not disclosed that he'd already collected seventy percent of it? Is that what question was directed, I believe?
Yeah, the majority of fees are in terms of design, and so, yes.
Seventy percent of it's already been paid.
Yes.
All right, Tom, when he first presented this as ten point eight to us, we were told then that, well, that does not include repairing the neon signs, it does not include the seating. So when did it get added?
No, ma'am, I presented that to you, he did not. I presented the ten point eight number. The ten point eight number is actually my number. There are numbers in that ten point eight that he provided, but I provided several of the other numbers, and I did tell you, and I presented the ten point eight million, that two hundred thousand was for seating, and one hundred thousand was for neon. It's in my presentation that I gave you, I have slides from that time.
I haven't had time, I wasn't there, I haven't had time to read that.
Okay, well, we're just saying it's...
That, that was a previous presentation, but, yes, ma'am.
What I wanted to get to was that, we, I know we have an obligation to the event, I mean, the conference center, right? And then the Hopes have the responsibility for the hotel. Where are we at on that? I mean, Mrs. O, I don't know if you wanna answer this, or as far as, is, is your part of the hotel being on time and it looks on budget? I mean, it doesn't look like we're gonna have to be asking for any more money for your part or for our part, which is the conference center? Thank you so much, I'm sorry I put you on the spot like this.
We are over budget, and it's over time, ours is significant, but probably about ten percent over budget.
Okay, and, and what about the conference center?
But we've committed to paying that, so we are doing that.
Yes, you will, we will be coming back to the council for some additional money for the conference center. We spoke about this several, several weeks ago, several months ago. We are working with the contractor now to establish what that number is. Once that number is established and, and worked out, we will come back to you for a request. Yes, sir.
Okay, any more questions?
Again, I just, I still feel like we could utilize five million elsewhere, again, should something go south globally, it's going to affect us right here, and we're gonna be in panic mode, and we're gonna try to figure out how to make up for that loss in sales tax and sales revenue and everything else. And so I just feel like this, right now, as of now, it's nothing I have against the project itself, I just honestly feel like ten point something million is just, is just a little much right now.
Counselor, may I ask you a question? No. Okay, I will entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion for approval, and we have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, raise your hands, one, two, three. All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the vote is three to two, and the motion passes.
I, I have to catch an airplane, so I've gotta leave.
Okay, yeah, please, yeah. Item eight.
Yes, thank you.
"Consider adopting a policy set aside ten percent of corporate revenues in special account for promotional purposes on an annual basis for Odessa Development Corporation." Ms. Muntzey.
Yes, sir. This resolution is to approve setting aside ten percent of the corporate revenues each year in the ODC budget for promotional purposes. You're limited to that amount under state law. Traditionally, ODC has not set aside ten percent, so this would enhance their amount of promotional fees that they could set aside, they don't have to use it, but they can have it available, and they can use it for their advertising to entice economic development in, they can use it for the facade grant program, they can use it for the business enhancement program that they started this last year with the UTPB Small Business Development Center. And the nice thing about this is, is that they are allowed to carry over unused monies from the past and use them in, in the future. So by setting aside this ten percent every year in this resolution, they will accomplish that, and it's been passed by the ODC Board, so they're asking for confirmation from the council.
Okay, is there any questions?
So is this the same ten percent we've been using for the facade grants? Is that, is it the same thing?
This is the same monies we've been using, it's not, so the facade money was brought about at two hundred and fifty thousand a couple of years ago, they set aside that amount, and that was part, that was under the ten percent rule, but they've never set aside the maximum amount of ten percent, it's always been something under that, and they want to establish doing ten percent every year from this point forward.
So council will still have, uh...
Authority.
The last say of what, where every, where every penny of it goes, right?
Yes.
Okay.
It, it still requires council approval, yes.
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Muntzey. Under miscellaneous appointment of boards, Ms. Grimaldo, do you have any?
We do. For the Citizens Gulf Advisory Committee, I said, there was a board application attached to your agenda for Elva Graham.
Okay, any, any others want to appoint?
Not right now.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a second?
You got that one second.
Motion in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We have no citizen comments on not agenda items, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
A motion second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned.